All rise, please.
I present the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Before the start of tonight's meeting, we had a... We met with an individual, Ted Felstein, who applied to be a member of the Planning Commission as a volunteer member. Well, it's... Actually, this microphone is for recording purposes, so I'll try and speak louder, okay? Before the start of tonight's meeting, we met... The supervisors met and we interviewed a man named Ted Felstein for a position on the Planning Commission. Before we proceed, I'd like to entertain a motion that he be appointed to the Planning Commission.
Make a motion we appoint Ted Felstein to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Before we start with the presentation, and I know you're all here for that, the likelihood is... I want to make sure that you all know, probability is that this matter's going to go back to the Planning Commission. No decisions are going to be made tonight. I just want you to know. The likelihood. I'm speaking for myself, but that's what's going to happen, I think. And I also want to point out to you, somebody... Ryan, can you point to that third flag hanging up there?
The American?
Yep. No, no. The new township flag.
This one?
Yes, that one. That one. That's our new township flag. If you haven't been paying attention to... Well, you... I'm taking advantage of all you here in the room. We celebrated our bicentennial last year, and we created a new township flag, and that's it. So I'm letting you all know. We all saw it last year, at the end of 2018. So since there's so many of you here, I'd like to point that out.
Wouldn't we do a little background?
What do you mean?
Wouldn't we do a little background before Bill Benner comes in?
Sure. Mr. Garten's going to do a little pavilion background.
I think I had brown hair when some... Somebody first came in with an application related to this property. This is the property at the intersection of Rogers Road and 263 and 313 on the other side. The current applicant has approval pursuant to a court order to do a mixed development of a daycare center and retail. The applicant has asked to meet or appear in public before the Board of Supervisors to express their interest in making a change from that mixed-use project of retail and a daycare center to a senior living center. So, Mr. Benner, and obviously, the Board's not going to be doing any approvals tonight. I think he just wants to bring it to the Board's attention, and I assume it'll send some response. Mr. Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Garten.
And this is going to be a brief presentation. Yes, Mr. Benner?
Mr. Benner's never brief.
That's why...
It better maybe a little short.
Not brief.
Thank you.
Should I address the board?
Please.
Yes.
Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, William Benner. It's my privilege once again to represent Mr. Grasso and his company in appearing before this Board. It's been a while that this group has assembled, and in that period, I see there are a couple of new faces among the supervisors. So I thought it might be appropriate to spend two or three minutes to trace the history of this project, following up from Mr. Garten's succinct summary. Mr. Garten was correct that in July of 2016, the Court of Bucks County entered an order that approved a settlement agreement that approved a mixed-use development. I see that Scott Mill is putting up on a board a sketch plan that shows the... That shows the concept sketch plan that received the approval of this Board and ultimately the Court back in 2016 that provided for a daycare use, a contractor's office, some retail, an urgent care center, and a retail store of about 10,000 square feet. And all the commercial project contemplated 52,000, 51 square feet of space. Following year in December, the... Mr. Grasso and his team reassembled before this Board and requested an amendment to the approved stipulation that called for the servicing of the project with public water and sewer, and this Board approved that request. In February of 2018, I had the privilege of meeting with the township staff in a work session meeting, and it was at that time that, on behalf of Mr. Grasso and his company, that I explained a new proposal for the development of the property. And that new proposal was a request to develop the land, not with a mixed-use commercial development, but instead with a senior housing project that would be less intense, would have far less impervious coverage, and was a project that Mr. Grasso believed had some marketability in this region. The staff at the time gave some encouragement, suggested that the consultants work cooperatively on some traffic issues, and those discussions continued for the greater part of 2018, culminating in the Department of Transportation issuing a letter requesting assurances from Doylestown Township that this use was a use that was authorized under applicable zoning or other land use regulations. And it was with that request from Pendott that a formal application was submitted to the Planning Commission to consider a modification to the stipulation in the nature of a substitution of the sketch plan. I see that Scott Mill has posted the proposed change in use on the Board and has stated that's a use that calls for senior citizen housing, calls for 124 independent senior citizen units with some ancillary services. Your Planning Commission conducted a very thorough review of this sketch plan, I believe it was back in November. The Planning Commission, however, couldn't come to resolution and requested some guidance from the supervisors, whether this was a concept that the supervisors felt was worth pursuing, and the applicant wholeheartedly joined in with that request. And it's on this basis that I've come before you, along with Mr. Grasso and his consultants, to discuss the development scheme. With me this evening is Scott Mill, who has been the project design engineer from the beginning. Also here is Mark Roth from McMahon Associates to address any questions that you or the audience may have over the traffic impact. And also, Mr. Grasso is here to talk about and answer any questions concerning the operations. Concerning those operations, Mr. Grasso tells me that the facility will have about 48 employees. Forty-seven employees will not be working at any one time. They'll be working in shifts. The largest number of employees working at any time will be approximately 20. The facility will offer a meal service, breakfast and dinner, if the residents choose. The facility comes with a full kitchen for the convenience of the residents. This... The type of living at this senior housing is independent living. It's not assisted living, nor is this a continuing care/retirement community. Instead, this is a community where residents, individuals would come, would sign either a lease or a license agreement. The average age of this... Of the residents would likely be in the range of 75 years of age. At least, that's the experience that Mr. Grasso's other development in Downingtown has experienced that was built some years ago and is now fully occupied. The facility offers bus service to the residents. It also offers van service to the residents for shopping, church, and other outings that the residents may have. It's been the experience of Mr. Grasso's company that has run a similar facility of a similar size in Downingtown Township that the parking needs are actually quite modest. The majority of the residents do not have their own vehicles. Rather, they rely upon the services offered by the operator. So that's an overview of what the concept is. If the Board wishes to hear more information concerning a comparison between the two uses, Scott Mill is here to go through that assessment. I do think it might be helpful if the Board were to hear a few words from Mark Roth concerning the traffic impact. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions from the Board, and so also are the consultants.
I don't think the Board, correct me if I'm wrong, needs to see a comparison or hear comparison between the two proposed uses.
Oh.
Does anyone need to do that? No?
No.
And I just want to... I read through the Planning Commission notes and the minutes and so on. They don't... The Planning Commission doesn't say that you should come here. It doesn't say that at all. In fact, there was a motion made that you guys should come before the supervisors, and that motion failed. So there's really nothing in the Planning Commission meeting that suggests that we're in the position now to make some kind of recommendation to you. So I just want to characterize for everybody who's listening, that's not what the Planning Commission did.
Right.
So you're here because the Planning Commission couldn't come to any kind of understanding as to what you were doing at the Planning Commission. So if you want to, you know, embellish the plan based on what the Planning Commission said was holes in your presentation there, we'll be happy to listen to it. But, like I said from the get-go, this is going to go back to the Planning Commission after you fill in those holes that the Planning Commission has.
Sure. Yes, and Mrs. Lyons, please don't misunderstand what I said. I was not trying to mischaracterize what the Planning Commission did or didn't do. It was my impression that the Planning Commission was looking for guidance. Perhaps it doesn't reflect...
No.
It doesn't reflect in the minutes, but irrespective. The applicant is here tonight to get some guidance from the supervisors, whether this is a project that is worth pursuing.
I don't know that we can do that without the Planning Commission weighing in on it. That's my point, I think.
To be sure, the applicant is not requesting a formal vote. What the applicant is requesting is some guidance. The applicant fully recognizes that the details need to be fleshed out with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission concluded not being able to come to consensus. It would seem that some guidance from the supervisors would be helpful to the Planning Commission in moving forward. On the other hand, if the supervisors believe that this is a project that is simply not worth pursuing, it would be useful for the applicant to get this information tonight rather than spending hours and hours with the Planning Commission fleshing out the details of a proposal that does not have any resonance with the governing body. So that's the reason that the applicant has come this evening.
Yeah, I really... I appreciate what you're saying here, Mr. Benner. And I'm speaking for myself. I haven't talked to the rest of the Board here. But I don't think you're going to get from us whether you should go or not go with this plan tonight. Like I said, we have the expertise and the diligence of the Planning Commission for a reason, and we respect their assessment and their reviews. And I don't particularly want to usurp that responsibility. So I don't know how much you can get from us tonight on this plan. But I'm seeing that I would want to... I want to flush it out with the Planning Commission, and you answer their questions. And if you have to do more homework in order to answer their questions, then that's where I think it should take place, not here. And then, all these good people here in the neighborhood would come back after that's all done, where a special meeting is held where they can really flush out any additional questions they have, through the planning process or through... Once the planning process is done at this Board, through the land development phase of it. But at this point, I don't... Like I said, I don't want to speak for the entire Board, but that's where I am right now. You're not going to get from me, "Go ahead" or "Not go ahead." And it's not fair for us to do that, because we don't know enough about this plan.
I agree.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no. As I think Tom and Judy hopefully will echo what I say. And you keep... You do are mischaracterizing. The Planning Commission didn't ask for guidance from the Board. Planning Commission said, in order for them to make a decision whether to advise the Board, they needed more information. The sketch plan was too sketchy. The number of staff, which you did bring that today, and that's helpful. That's part of the combination. But the Planning Commission was not comfortable in recommending anything to the Board because of the vagueness of your presentation to the Planning Committee. So... And then, you know, from what I understood, you wanted to come to the Board and take a shot at answering those questions to the Board, and that's good that you're prepared. I'm not sure you're even prepared enough now to go to the Planning Commission. So I think you have to get some more detail, some more work, and some more specificity before you go back to the Planning Commission, get their recommendations, and then come back to us.
Well, I think there's been a bit of a misunderstanding, and I think it's certainly an innocent misunderstanding. As stated, there was no intention on my part to mischaracterize what the Planning Commission did or didn't do. I made clear, and the consultants for Mr. Grasso made clear before the Planning Commission that the many questions that they raised would be addressed. The concern, of course, was getting into the... Getting into the details concerning the legitimate questions that the Planning Commission did raise and recognizing that the time that the Planning Commission would devote, the time that the applicant would devote. And let me make clear, Mr. Grasso was fully prepared to spend as much time with the Planning Commission as they feel that they need to make an informed decision. The concern, of course, on the part of the applicant was whether the pursuit of this plan and spending the countless hours with the Planning Commission, answering their legitimate questions, if they... If this was an overall concept that this Board found to be just simply contrary to what your vision is for the property. The applicant is not asking you to usurp the role of the Planning Commission. The applicant came before you to get feedback, if any. If the Board feels constrained to make no opinion, that's certainly within your prerogative. Mr. Grasso had hoped that there might be some constructive comments, but will defer to your exercise of discretion.
Were you able to flush out any more details since that Planning Commission meeting?
Yes.
Do you want to enumerate them for us?
Yes. Well, I've already addressed the issue of the number of employees, the age, the...
Breakfast and dinner, full kitchen?
Yes. And there was some uncertainty concerning the height of the building. That has now been reconciled. The height of the building will be about... Will be 50 feet in some areas, but not in all areas because of the way in which a building height is addressed. There's been additional work on traffic. There's been additional work concerning the parking needs of the facility. And I think those were the major concerns that the members of the Planning Commission raised and some of the residents had raised.
You're right. And there was talk about traffic flow.
All of that.
There was talk about bike and hike pass. There was talk about Rogers Road access.
Sure.
Or no access. So there was a lot of things. And yeah, I... In concurrence with Barb, that I'm not in any position to form an opinion that this is good or not. I recognize it is less intrusive based on what I see, which is a good thing, but I'm not in a position to say, "Concept-wise, yeah, keep going," because I don't know enough yet.
Well, I think, "Concept-wise, keep going" if you want to continue to pursue the project with the Planning Commission. I mean, we actually just had this discussion in our executive meeting as we were appointing someone to our Planning Commission. Like, we put a lot of trust in them. And so it's important for us to get their insight before we give any recommendations on a plan.
Understood.
So I guess, in short, you want to hear from us at some point whether this is a good fit for this property?
That's correct.
This independent senior living facility?
Yes, it was not... It was never the contemplation of Mr. Grasso or his representatives to leave this meeting with a vote. It was instead an opportunity to unveil the project publicly before the newly constituted Board, to acquaint the Board with the proposal.
It's just one member, Mr. Benner.
Yeah.
The rest of us are older. Been here for a while.
Still a newly...
Just the young lady at the end.
It's still newly constituted, and it's been a while that we've had the opportunity to...
We just look older. We're all the same.
It's been a while that we've had the opportunity to have quality...
Ryan Menion gets younger.
You know, to have quality time and so...
No. I appreciate you guys being here, and I know that there's a whole lot of time and expense with you guys here. But I hope you understand that it's inappropriate for us to give you that information, to say to you, "Go ahead with this. We like this plan," or "Don't go ahead with this. We don't like this plan," because we don't feel we have enough to go on. And we don't want to mislead you, you know, make you put that money into it, and we go, "Pff, you know, we don't like this."
Well, you wouldn't give the chance to the Planning Commission to vet it either.
Yeah. So... And we want to hear from these folks, but we want to hear from them when the timing is appropriate, after they have more information.
Sure.
Because a whole lot of their questions and their concerns would be addressed in that other process. And then, if they're not, they know they can always come back here. Do you understand? Yeah. Let me just finish here with the Board, and then... Is it all right if I call on Mr. O'Malley?
It's your meeting.
Mr. O'Malley, there's... Well, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, that concludes what we're about to say.
Mr. O'Malley, please use that microphone there, please. I know I can always count on you, Mr. O'Malley, to have something to say.
Joe O'Malley, Rogers Road. I take issue with the... That there was no intent. The residents received notice about this meeting on Saturday for a meeting tonight. So what was the hurry? This is a property that's decades old, and then, all of a sudden, we get two or three days' notice that there's a meeting, and we don't know what it's all about. And then, we come here, and for what reason? All these people came out.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. There's really no hidden agenda here, or it was just a matter of scheduling. It went... They requested to be on the agenda. They got on the agenda, and here we are. So it's not their fault. It's just the way things get done here. That's all. It's not...
It just has a bad... Leaves a bad taste.
It's okay. I understand.
People have just had reorganization.
It's... Yeah. And we just had reorganization. She's right. We just had reorganization. So there's no...
That's the schedule.
There's no ill intention or...
And they were at the November Planning Commission where we had sent the same notice.
Right.
And, you know, typically, two months, as you guys know from past history, within two months of a meeting with the Planning Commission, they're usually before... They usually come to the Board.
All right. One more... Yes, ma'am. Would you kindly take the...
I'm printing my notes.
Yes.
I promise it'll be short. Let's not fall. Chelsea Baskman, Rogers Road. So first of all, just to jump on that comment, there are new people in the neighborhood, so I understand that in past history, that a month or two after a Planning Commission meeting, that there is a Board of Supervisors meeting. But as a new resident of the community, I wasn't aware of that. So getting the letter on a Saturday, and then, for me, with my work schedule, I do have dinner meetings. I have to travel out of town. I think it was really important for me, as a new member of the neighborhood, to be here this evening. So I'm glad that I had my neighbors and the support of those neighbors to let me know that this meeting was happening tonight. In addition to that, I just want to address the fact that you were saying that you wanted to come here this evening to get more direction and information from the Board of Supervisors. But if you just went back through the meeting minutes, it really says, and I have quotes written down, because I went back to review myself as well, because I wanted to make sure that I was prepared to ask the right questions. It has everything in there that you need, and it gives direct feedback as to the specific questions that are asked, whether or not we support that this plan is better than the previous plan. Everything that you asked this evening, that you're looking for from the Board of Supervisors, was addressed at the last meeting, and it is addressed in the minutes as well. So it does leave a sour taste, at least in the residents of the community, for you to say that there was no intent to come here this evening and to get this kind of slip through the cracks. Excuse my language for that. But it just doesn't seem right to the residents, that we gave a lot of positive feedback. We were very open about our concerns and our questions, and I just feel as though if your intentions were as you say they are, then you would have come back to the Planning Commission with those answers that we are looking for.
And Ms. Bask, I think we've covered that. So I think they're going to go back to the Planning Commission, and please stay involved. You're like a vital part of this process.
Thank you.
So please stay involved. And I think that, like I said, they're under an impression... One impression. We were under a different impression, and you guys all have your own ideas. But I think we don't need to beat them up anymore. Anybody else?
Feel free.
Nah, it's all right, Bill.
Okay.
No, I'm not going to do that.
Pierre Menard, Number 1, Old Nursery Road. So I wasn't able to attend the planning meeting, so very much appreciate this opportunity. I'm not going to beat you up, but I do have a few basic questions. One is, did you mention how many residents were...
Yeah.
What was the number?
124 units. There's 124 rooms. Or, excuse me, 124 units. Exactly how many residents there will be?
Most of them are single. The 124 units, maybe 12 two-bedrooms.
One second. If you're going to speak, you have to go to the microphone and identify yourself for our viewing public. No, please.
Yeah.
Yes, no, yes. Please, but you have to go to the microphone and identify who you are, because we're being televised live.
There's 124 units.
Identify yourself.
Of the 124 units, I think it's about 12 or 10 two-bedrooms. Most people are single. Each apartment has a full kitchen. The people can cook their own food if they like. But we do serve breakfast. We do serve dinner. We have a cocktail hour at 4:00. We have an indoor pool. We have a gymnasium. We have a beauty salon, all for the residents. It's a lifestyle that is very successful in Downingtown. We invited some of the folks and staff to visit our Downingtown facility and see what it looks like. Most of our residents are women. The men don't make it that long, and I hope I can make it so I can move into this unit when it gets built, so I'm long enough.
I hope so, too. Tell me your name, sir?
Excuse me?
Your name, please?
Michael Grasso.
Thank you, Mike. Oh, you're Michael Grasso. I have been on this Board for, I don't know, 16 years, and I don't think I've ever seen you.
You won't see me again.
I saw your son, unless this process has aged you so greatly, but I think I remember a much younger man years ago.
That's my son.
Yes, okay. Well, welcome, Mr. Grasso.
Thank you.
We hope this is your last plan, because we've seen so many.
Yeah, just a...
You done, Mr. Menard?
Almost.
Okay.
Three easy questions. Three easy questions, hopefully. So the use is different, does it, does the new use require zoning changes?
It requires an amendment to the stipulation and an amended court order. No zoning.
And what about variances? Is there a-
Well, that's what I just mentioned, same thing.
Okay. And can you, what's the impervious surface of the new plan?
The new plan is- Scott Mill from Van Cleef. The new plan's about three acres, the previous plan was about six acres of impervious, so it's about half.
Does, does this plan allow for additional building after this, this structure?
My understanding would be that if this is part of an amended stipulation, anything that would be proposed after that would have to come before the board and reamend that stipulation.
We would require as part of a court order that this is the only improvements.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see no other hand, so, whoops, Mrs. Struzniewski? You still have to identify yourself.
I'll correct your pronunciation, Mary Lou Struzniewski.
Okay.
I live just off Rogers Road. The concern is still traffic, 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 and we still don't have reasonable information about how Rogers Road would be affected, if there is coordination, which originally was promised with the temple, and what you're going to do about 263, because for myself, I come out of Brook Drive, I never, ever turn right and go down to try to turn left onto 263. You risk your life. I go all the way around, out, it's a habit, go to the light where it's safe, and I think a lot of the residents do that. So what's going to happen for entering and leaving this facility for the people who are going to live there, especially if some of them are elderly? That's really the concern.
Well, let them flush that all out, okay?
That's what I'm, well, that's the point I want to make.
Circulation and patterns and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
You may not get that tonight.
Yeah, oh, no, but we want something that deals with PennDOT and gets this whole light, not light, wear a light, whatever, that's been going on for so long, we want that resolved.
Yeah, that's pretty obvious in the minutes, too. Thank you so much, Mrs. Struzniewski. All right, that it? That it? Nope, one more.
That's one.
Two more. You want to line up? Wait, gentleman behind you had his hand up first.
Hi, Bob Sizik, Wendover Lane. Any idea about sewer and water lines to this-
Public.
-complex?
Public.
Public?
Yes.
Do you know where the line would be going from that complex?
This had been discussed at a previous meeting, I'm not equipped this evening to go into a great deal of detail, Scott Mill could give you a, an evaluation, but there has been close coordination with the, with Doylestown Township Water Department Authority and with the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. There's conceptual agreement concerning the routing of the, of the sewer lines and the water lines.
Has that been discussed at all and planned, or just, just an idea?
Well, at the last planning commission, we didn't get into a lot of discussion about it, but there had, when the stipulation had been revised back in 2017, there was a lot of discussion concerning the means by which the property would receive water and sewer, and there was a full presentation to the board of supervisors at the time. More than happy to discuss these issues with you at the next planning commission meeting, but that issue, that's one of the very few issues that has been, I would say, 99% resolved.
Okay, one other comment. I do recall that when the synagogue proposal was made, there was a lot of objection about traffic and noise. Well, the synagogue was built, and I see no problem with traffic or noise, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ma'am?
May I comment on something further down?
No, you have to come up to the microphone.
I'm asking you if I can address something further down the agenda.
Not, not the Grasso, she won't.
Oh, not the, no, can you wait, please? All right, we're going to stay on the Grasso until we're done, okay? We're done?
I believe we're done. Just one point I want to make clear for the board and for the residents. If this project succeeds, that is to say, if there is an agreement concerning an amendment to the stipulation, as Mr. Garten had alluded, please understand that this plan will substitute in all respects for the previous commercial development.
Understood. Understood, thank you.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
No, thank you. We look forward to hearing back from the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Grasso, nice to meet you, sir.
Yep, see ya.
It's the first time I've ever stolen a-
You're under no obligation to say.
Yes, if you're, if you're leaving now because of Grasso, please do, because then we'll, we'll pick up with the agenda. See ya, Scott. See ya. My pleasure. Happy New Year. If you'd called me ahead of time, I could have saved a bean cake.
We only took around a little gun.
Presentation, pull one out of your bag and just do one.
Good night, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you. All righty then, we're going to return to the agenda.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, thank you. Thank you for coming, thank you. All right, move it along, Mr. Benner. Going back to the agenda.
For visitors incoming, now she's ready.
For visitors and public comment. Dave, you want to usher them out and close the door? Tom, how about closing the door behind them? Yeah.
Thank you. Madam Chair, my name is Jacqueline Murphy, I live on Chestnut Valley Drive, and I know further down you're having a consumer fireworks.
Okay.
And I would really like to know what you consider consumer fireworks, because we are plagued by an individual on North Shady Tree Road that puts off munitions.
Puts off munitions?
Munitions.
Like, what's a munition?
Like a bombs.
Bombs?
It's just almost like what they had up in Quaker Town.
Did you call the police?
We do, and the police know who the gentleman is, and we usually get a chuckle.
Uh-oh. Chief, do you care to comment?
I will not comment on that until I've researched it further.
So you, you need to talk to our chief, and those things are taken, those issues are taken very seriously in this township, so I don't know who's telling you that, but it's going to stop right now, okay?
Gee, I don't know what this gentleman, this has gone on for nine years, the people tell me on that road.
Well, how long have you heard it?
Three years since we've been there, we're new.
And how often do these bombs go off?
I'd say in the three years we've been there, maybe 200 times.
Oh, all times a day, at night?
Different times, you're sitting down watching the news, or maybe it's 10 o'clock, or maybe it's, you're 2:00 in the morning.
Do you know what the address is of the property?
It's the 400 block of North Shady Retreat. It's one of the two-long driveways where the houses go very far into the woods.
Do you notice a time when the bombs go off more often than others?
Early evening, 9, 10 o'clock.
Okay, and all, all days during the week?
Not during the day.
But I mean, Monday, or Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
And the weekends are worse.
And the weekends are worse?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just wanted to know, consumer fireworks, I understand, I just didn't know what you considered a consumer firework.
But we're doing, yes, consumer fireworks are, you know, typical fireworks, not bombs or ordinances.
And they're going to be regulated to very limited periods, too.
Really?
Yes.
Like New Year's Eve?
Right.
On the Eagles' win or something?
Yeah, special things.
That may be a special, yeah.
That may be a special year.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I think I will just make an appointment to go talk to the chief.
Yep.
Please do.
Thank you very much for your time.
He's very responsive, and that, we've got a great department, and he'll be all over it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome. Tell me your name again?
Jacqueline Murphy.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Is that you?
Did he fix your foot?
Oh, no.
He didn't, he didn't break it, did he?
No, that was last year also.
Oh, jeez.
So I'm going to bedazzle the boot.
Oh, gee. I like the socks. Okay, so any other visitors or public comment? All right, moving on. Our next meeting is February 5th at 5:00. Movie and ski tickets, movie, ski ticket, and Philadelphia Flower Show, tickets are available on DoylestownRec.com. Christmas tree drop-off at the New Britain entrance to Central Park is between now and February 10th. Doylestown Township Park and Recreation in partnership with Premier World Discovery is offering two trips in 2019, California Rails and Rome, Country Roads of Tuscany. It looks like it's Rome and the Country Roads of Tuscany, and visit our administrative offices or go online to get more details. Reorganization meeting from January 2nd, 2019, you have the minutes in your packet, that can't be right.
It's not right, the date.
When was the reorganization meeting, that's the wrong date. Let me do this again. Monday, January 7, 2019. Minutes to approve those, those, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oops, I caught it before you did. Volunteer resignation, I'm sorry to say, from Ms. Solkov to Ms. Mason. Is there a motion to accept Ms. Solkov's resignation?
I'll move to accept the resignation.
That she's, she's resigning from the Park and Rec, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And she tried to get on the dog park, but she can't, because she's not a dog park member. Okay, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item, report from the solicitor.
Meeting two, maybe two or three meetings ago, Supervisor Herring provided to the board and to the staff a kind of an outline of her thinking with respect to a green points program, the intent of which was to endeavor to find a way to encourage homeowners, contractors, developers, whatever, to use construction methods that would be more eco-friendly and would save the environment. I took some of her thinking and created a rough draft of an ordinance just for discussion that was shared with Sinclair, who, you see back there, who had some comments as a result of a meeting that took place involving Sinclair, I think Stephanie and Jennifer. And he authored some comments that appear, that was in your packet, depending, was dated 12/14/08. So basically, I think we're on tonight just to get some thoughts from the board, so I can make some modifications to the ordinance or incorporate Sinclair's comments to get something that you could look at again that has more of a finished product look, having been reviewed by Sinclair.
I think you really have, well, first incorporate Sinclair's comments, for sure.
No, I know that, I mean, I-
My question I had, besides, I'm not sure how much this is going to cost the township overall, not only in terms of what we lose for permit fees, but also the cost of maintaining this program looks kind of wieldy. Like, how do we go in and assess the, the points and keep track of them and make sure there's compliance on all aspects of that? Because once you get the, those walls up, I mean, it's like, there's going to need to be constant maintenance and look see at every stage of a residential or commercial unit construction.
One of the things, and I don't want to speak for Sinclair or Jen, but I know one of the things they were talking about in the suggestion is that an independent third-party evaluator would come in to make sure that the points that the applicant is requesting-
Who pays for that?
The applicant.
Oh, the applicant pays for that.
Yes, the applicant pays for all that. So, so we would, it's really in the percentage on the, on the building permit, if I'm correct, Sinclair and Jen, that if you, the number of points you get at this point could go to 50, and you could get 50% reduction in the revenue on a, on a building permit that complies with the green points plan. Obviously, we've had consideration and concern as to how many residents or businesses would use this, what we found from our neighbors who have this, we have two, two in the area, not a lot of people are using it, unfortunately, from an environmental standpoint. Warwick's program has a 10% reduction in the permit fee, whereas the boroughs has the 50%, and I think we're trying to follow what was suggested, perhaps follow that. Obviously, maybe on a small project, it may not, you may not lose so much in the revenue side, but certainly a concern in Jen and Sinclair, and I talked about that, was on a much larger project, that could really be significant if they met all the points and were able to do that. Now, you know, perhaps the, for a smaller project, the third party, paying for that third-party inspector may be a little bit of a deterrent, but, you know, perhaps the board might, you know, on discussion, might want to consider some alternatives if we're concerned about losing significant on the, significantly on the permit fees.
I don't have any problem, you know, if, if people use it or don't use it, I, I mean, that's something we can control. I, one, I would like to have Judy Stern-Goldstein go through this and, and reference it and look at it from a saldo perspective. I mean, in here, we have native plants, I, I don't already, we already require it.
Now.
Yeah. I did send it to her.
I just wanted you to start looking.
Judy has it, and she, I, we, she and I talked this afternoon, so-
So I would like that, and then give that to Stephanie, if Stephanie's happy, give that to Jeff, so that when we have our next meeting, it's more comprehensive and not jumbled, if you will. And I also echo Stephanie as far as the amount and the impact, I'd like to know what the impact is, but the alternative may be, if it's a huge impact, just limit the most you can reduce your permit fees by 5,000, just picking that number.
You can do a sliding scale or anything, we do that.
Yeah, so I, I don't think that's a, you're right, a large project's going to be $50,000. I don't think any of us want to go towards that kind of number, but I think that might be some way to alleviate that huge amount, especially when we have a couple of large projects coming up, it could be 50,000 easily.
What does it cost for a third party to come?
That's what I was going to say, are there services that do that, and what's the cost?
Yeah, there are.
It's one thing we don't know, I mean-
But I mean, we're going to give them a, a discount on the permit.
Yeah, they pay for the service.
So they pay for that, I mean, what's the trade-off? How many points do you need to get before you pay for that third-party evaluation?
Yeah, I don't know how much the, the third party is, if we found-
Do you have any idea, Sinclair? He's coming up now.
Surely he turns, step by step.
Sinclair Stolzbray, Director of Code Enforcement. Yeah, we don't really know, but if you think about it, the, the cost borne by verification would be done by the applicant, so they would decide if it was worth their time to engage a third party to do some inspections. There are out-there energy type, you know, inspection companies that will do audits and provide information that somebody's complying, so really, the whole burden is on the applicant to show that they are going to comply.
Right, but we want to introduce a program that we hope people will do more of, that's the intent, right?
Right.
And so if people aren't taking advantage of it, because it costs them almost as much for a third-party verification than it does the reduction in the fee, we don't need to put a program into, for a couple of things.
Right, so some, not every item, I believe, in an ordinance like this would have to be verified by a third party. You know, if somebody's getting LED light bulbs 100% within a, we can do that on inspection. If they're using Energy Star appliances and heaters and everything, well, we just have the documentation when we do an inspection. Some of the third-party verification would go in to more complex construction projects, so it's, it would be, really, a program like this is, the applicant can see whether they can benefit from it, and it would be up to them to show that it was worth their investment to comply.
This is a probably a really stupid question, but what's preventing us from creating our ordinances to reflect green product construction?
Well, we have the National Building Code. Well, we have the National Building Code.
Good thingies.
Yes, so we're regulated by it.
By 2015, yeah. But we can't, we can't...
We can't do away with what's permitted in the code.
Correct.
Other than by incentives.
No, but, okay. So it probably requires this kind of lumber.
We can't mandate, we can't mandate, you can't use the lumber that's permitted in the code.
Yeah, generally, actually, the codes permit, it's a performance. You have to meet a certain performance. So the code doesn't say you have to build your structure out of wood and drywall. It says you have to meet this, say, structural and energy requirement. So you can build a house out of straw bales if you want, but...
If it meets the code.
If it meets the requirement.
And I puffed in there.
Is there, I wonder, is there outside of like a third-party, is there anything, any opportunities for you to get outside of like the Energy Star appliances and LED light bulbs? Like, is there, are there any like trainings or something that you could take?
Well, actually, I am a certified, I am a certified green building inspector for residential, so I do have some knowledge of what's going on.
Could you be that third-party person?
No, not for all complex projects. You have to.
So you'd have, my point is you'd have to have a third-party. Like, it wouldn't matter.
In some instances, yes.
Same as today.
Okay, yeah. All right, so flush this out and see what we think.
So we're going to, we're going to wait for Judy's comments. We're going to take her comments, incorporate Sinclair's comments, and do something for you to look at.
And like to understand the impact, financial impact.
I think we want, it's a good thing to do, but we just got to need to see whether it's financially worthwhile.
I mean, what we've seen and heard from our other, from our counterparts, is they're getting one or two of these a year.
You have to start somewhere.
But, yeah, you know.
All right, thank you, Sinclair. Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on to tennis and basketball courts.
The next item, you'll recall at the last meeting or the meeting before, you had a conversation about a resident not of this township that was exercised about the fact that he couldn't use the basketball and tennis courts for soccer. And there was a question about what our, what our ordinance said about restrictions to those courts, and I think Stephanie has provided to you that memo that talks about what our current restrictions are. It looks like they cover the topic.
It does, but, so, I still say that in our fee schedule, where they have those little footnotes that we say, "Our ordinances require or provide or prohibit blah, blah, blah." I mean, it's okay, because it's already an ordinance, right? So they're just getting a twofer.
Extra reminder.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and we did incorporate that into the fee schedule. However, I think where the chief and I had had a conversation, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, was that you, you had a concern about pickleball?
It's, my understanding, the ordinance reads it's only to be used for basketball and tennis, however, the township permits other uses outside of that.
I.e., pickleball is the new similar, but we also...
Pickleball's akin to tennis, isn't it?
Yeah, it's very similar to tennis.
It's a play on words, and it goes into, and I understand what the concept is with the, it's, you know, the molded, you don't want molded cleats on there. I think that specifically has prohibited anybody wearing molded cleats.
It says rubber sole shoes only.
And I understand, we're trying to protect the surface itself, but when you, when the township obviously allows other uses other than the two specifically stated in the ordinance. So how am I supposed to...
What are the other uses besides pickleball?
There's a lot of stuff that goes on out there.
Mostly tennis and... I don't know, I don't know if I want to know anymore.
I mean, there's, there's all kinds of things that people do out there that are not, it's just, and I know what the under, it's the, it's the specific wooden soccer nets that they drag onto the court and the shoes that they're wearing, which, if it wasn't for that, I'm not so sure it wouldn't be...
Well, that's what makes it prohibitive.
Correct.
So, that's all you can do.
And you're, and with all honesty, we're dealing with one group of individuals out there that are not complying, and I think that the approach needs to be a little more tactful as far as who we approach and who we don't approach. The one individual that seems to be sending the letters is probably not the person that we need to speak to when it's occurring. There's partners out there that might be a little bit more understanding, and if this individual doesn't have people to play with, he won't come.
Okay.
So, I don't know that this is a point in time where the whole ordinance needs to be changed.
No, we're not trying to change the ordinance. We're just trying to...
Make sure we were in a good position if we had, if we...
Yeah.
I think, I think what it needs to be is we need to find a good way to make sure that we're contacting the right people and the right message is getting to the person that's out there.
So is that going to be the police, or should that be the parks and local people?
I would absolutely request that we are the ones that make contact with them, because we are not going to forcibly remove anybody from the tennis courts. We will take it and we will try to approach them and talk reason into the most reasonable person that's, and if they don't, we will cite them and we will let the court determine.
Okay. It's in your hands. Thank you.
We'll take care of it. But we can't, you know, we just need to be advised at one we see it.
Yeah, somebody advise him, Phil Karen.
Let him know when we're out there.
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Garten. Chief, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Township engineer?
None of the time, just...
Thank you. Manager?
Yes, I have two training requests from Rick Shea, our fire marshal, for him to attend a training in New Jersey in March. This was a training that unfortunately, due to snowstorm last year, he missed, so we don't have to pay the conference fee, but it would be for an overnight stay. The second travel request is for Mr. Shea and Rob Dando to attend the National Facilities Management and Technology Conference in Baltimore, including an overnight stay and meals. The conference actually is free, and would, that's the associate who works with Mr., and all the cleaning and training, and clean up...
Rod Dando is somebody who works with Mr. Shea? Says he worked for the township?
Yes, he does.
I'll make a motion to approve those trains. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we saw the memo from you on...
There's also a training request from Karen Sweeney for the Park Recreation State Conference for her to attend, as well as Caitlin up, because of the programming opportunities there as well.
I'll make a motion for that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
All good to go? Now your memo regarding Swamp Road and Old Eastern Road projects. Everyone had a chance to review this? Any questions of Stephanie at this point in time? The next steps are pretty clear.
Yeah, and nothing's going to happen until that connector road is completed.
From Wawa.
Yeah, in the Wawa. So we're probably looking sometime in 2020. The through movements on Old Eastern Road and Main Street would no longer be allowed. The northbound Old Eastern Road and Main Street would be left and right turns only. The left turns from eastbound Swamp Road would no longer be allowed, and the left-turn lane only would be installed on the westbound Swamp Road side, and the southbound Old Eastern Road would be a right turn only onto Swamp. And of course, the equipment would remain. They're going to try to test it, covering it, because then eventually they want that light, PennDOT still wants that light to go away, but they won't take it away until after it's been fully evaluated.
Okay.
What is the evaluation period? Do you know? Did they say how long they're going to test this?
I believe it's a 90-day period.
90 days?
Yes.
When's it start?
Probably in 2020, when the connector road is done.
Okay. So... Any other questions on that? Director of Operations?
I do not have anything.
Get out.
Nope.
Supervisors, Ms. Herring?
Nothing today, thanks.
Okay.
Actually, I think Dave does have something to talk about, because I think it was a good exercise on Friday.
Yeah, I just wanted to inform the board that the, we had our CS-Datum and robotics training with CS-Davidson, Jordan Good. We had a number of staff members, I think approximately 20, from the chief to code enforcement to Public Works to Ms. Mason, and our consultants as well, and it was very well-received, and there's a lot of information and a lot of just getting to know how to use a program and really looking how we can use it as a tool for basically a lot of number of items in the municipality. So just want to let you know that that occurred.
Yeah, I mean, this is a major change on how you're going to do business, so I think it's good that we broadcast this, because, one, is, what is, do you have a strategy on how you're going to roll this out?
We haven't sat down. What I really wanted to do is get everybody to see what, how it can be used and see the flexibility of the, of it, and then really try to talk about how we are going to start implementing things. But our, our main priority is the road program, and Jeff and I were talking before the meeting that we need to sit down and talk about the 2019 road program.
Right.
And then how we're going to start to populate data and information to start to build a future road program for future years. So that is number one.
So we will, the intent is to use it for the 2019 road program?
It's a start. We really kind of know, and I think we, if we, if we tarry a little bit, we're going to miss the bidding opportunity for 2019.
Right.
So we'll still, we'll use what Mr. Gar has recommended for roads in 2019, and then look to 2020 and beyond for implementing what we have, but we're going to start to build information into that database for future years.
When do we plan on having our plan for the roads for 2019?
We have a recommendation from Mr. Gar, which I can publish to the board, and Jeff and myself and Mr. Gar will go out and take a look, and we'll start to develop contract documents. There is also a number of roads that we plan to try to do in-house with some other funding sources and rental equipment and operators through that contract as well.
I had a special request that Shady Retreat Road be looked at again.
I did see your request.
You saw that?
Yes.
From a resident over there? She said they've been on the list a couple of times.
Okay.
I had a resident ask about East as well.
East Road? It's a mess.
Okay.
It's gotten so much use, it's the new intersection win, and everyone uses it now as a throughway. Oh, well, do you have anything more?
One other...
Or do you have anything? That was Mr. Tomco.
I have one more thing. Well, I had to urge him on there. We had a very good pension advisory committee meeting this week, yesterday, and so they're enthusiastic and are going to be coming forward with their list of proposals and recommendations. The only question we have is, I know you're, you're thinking about changing how we do that communication, where the boards and committees come to the board and present what they did last year and what they're going to do this year, and we're going to stagger that over time. So my question is, are we going to lay out a schedule on when we can, so committees know when they need to be prepared for coming forward? Do we have that schedule, or?
No.
Okay.
No, we, we just decided just the other day that we weren't going to require them all to be here on February.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so we're, we'll let, let it up to the chairmans of those, chairpeople of those committees to make the best time for their presentation.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think that's probably the best one.
We're going to communicate with each one, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
We'll let them put it together, and hopefully we'll get three at a time, two at a time, something like that.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect, yep. Nothing else, thank you.
Ms. Colallo?
I just have one thing more, I guess, a public service announcement, in the hopes that it falls on ears and someone, at least one person, if not more, hopefully, but in our PSATs magazine, we saw, and I mentioned this in previous board meetings over the years, is the deadly ramifications of radon. The leading cause of lung cancer in the United States is smoking. We all know that. The second-leading cause isn't secondhand smoke, which gets all the publicity, it's actually radon, that we're inhaling every day, and our kids are inhaling, and our grandkids are inhaling, and we don't know it. 40% of the houses in Pennsylvania are at unsafe levels. Most of the homes already have it, radon, but they're at subdued levels, but 40% are above the unsafe, unsafe levels. I had it done, I went through this process years and years ago. It's very easy. You get a free kit, you hang it on the ceiling, you send it away, and it tells you if you're in the unsafe area, and the remediation, maybe $1,000, depending on your house and how the setup is, but, you know, you'll, you'll live longer, your kids will live longer, and your grandkids, so I hope someone out there...
Where do you get the radon kits?
There's a public service announcer, you hear it all the time, it's, I'll get it, we'll get it on the website. It's radon, I don't want to say what it is.
But we'll put it on the website.
Yeah. Yeah, so please look at the website, please get involved. It's for everybody's, obviously, health.
Thanks, Frank, it's a good idea. Brian, you got anything?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Chief and I, and Sergeant Ziegler, and Officer Whiteside, we spent the last couple of days interviewing candidates for police officers, and it's too early to suggest that there's going to be any one or two, but five will be investigated further, so I just want you to know that we, we looked at some pretty good candidates.
Good.
And that's all I have. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Amendments to the zoning ordinance cleanup. Before you get out of your chair, yeah, there, there are a lot of cleanup bits and pieces in the zoning.
Well, we want to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
We want to say that...
Please say something. I just don't want her to get up and start...
She's not getting up yet.
Okay. God, I know you want to like...
This, the whole cleanup ordinance arose from the planning commission and a lot of work spent. When the reviews came back from the Bucks County Planning Commission, I think we all got a little concerned about the elements related to the group homes and all the sort of things that were noted therein, as well as a few little minor editorial comments. And I think our collective recommendation from the manager and Judy and I is that if you intend to proceed, we would suggest that you strike Sections 38 through 46 related to those issues, and let us spend more time with that aspect of your cleanup.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm good with that.
And that we would, we would suggest that you proceed if you're so inclined to approve the ordinance deleting 38 to 46 and making the minor corrections noted in the Bucks County Planning Commission's comments. It's been duly advertised, and you have to conduct a public hearing. Copy was sent to the intelligencer as well as to the law library, but that's our recommendation.
Can we do the public hearing now?
Sure.
Okay.
You can adopt the ordinance with those removals.
Well, we're going to open the public hearing. Any comments from the board or anybody else out there regarding the recommendations of the solicitor, as well as the planner and the manager? And based on our review?
Yep.
Is it the board's, is there a motion to...
To delete Sections 38 to 46 and make the editorial corrections noted in the Bucks County Planning Commission's memorandum dated January 2, 2019.
I'll move. Sir, a second?
Second.
Any further public comment? Comment from the board? Hearing none, calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is the modifications to the subdivision ordinance, which have no controversy. We're just removing the signage piece out of that because it's in the zoning ordinance.
Is there a motion to amend?
Have a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Open up the meeting to the public hearing on removing the signing, the sign, what's it called?
Sign standards.
Moving the sign standards from the ordinance to, to remove it, because it's already in the plan development.
And duly advertised.
And it's duly advertised.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Second?
Second.
So, any public comment? Any further hearing? Hearing nothing? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Oops, that was close. Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Solicitor, on that?
Not at this moment, just some things that come up later.
Amendments to the fireworks.
The fireworks, yeah, the fireworks.
I'm just talking about those things.
The fireworks ordinance is incorporating the restrictions that you folks discussed have been duly advertised, ready for your action, but I also sent a letter to the township saying that the state law had been changed on, the court had decided that the state law, as far as tent sales, was no longer, was not valid, but that doesn't affect the ordinance in front of you today.
Thanks for sending that. It's interesting reading. It's interesting reading.
So the fireworks ordinance related to the use and the restrictions on times and so forth, duly advertised, is ready for you to conduct a public hearing. If appropriate, proceed with taking some action.
Okay, we're gonna open up the floor to the public hearing on the fireworks within the township. Any comment from the public? Hearing none, any comment from the board?
No.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the ordinance, admitting the provision regarding fireworks within the township?
Move to approve the fireworks ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's done, sir. Moving along. Historic significance of 2225 Lower State Road. I see Mr. Marshall here. I think it's fair to say that there's no challenge to the significance of the historic attributes of this location, yes, this house. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No, no.
I think that our issue with this facility is that there intends to be nine units on four acres, which is not within our zoning, B-15 use. Is that the issue?
Today, I was just asking if you can, if this property belongs on your historic list of properties, that's the only thing you have to...
That's the only thing we have to decide?
Tonight.
Correct, tonight.
I don't think that's an issue. Does anybody have an issue with that?
I have no issue with it.
Mr. Colallo?
No, I'm okay.
So your motion would be to include this property on your list of historic properties?
You have some concern, Mr. Colallo?
No, I guess, I guess because of the second part, you know, the elephant in the room or whatever.
Yes, the elephant in the room.
This does not necessarily bind us to get the B-14.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, I just wanna make that...
We would have to go in front of the zoning haring board and get some relief, get some variances.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, this is not our ordinance. Our ordinance is 10 acres, not 4 acres.
Understood.
I don't know. I have a problem with it, but I think it is a historic...
Just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Marshall, do you care to take the podium for a second?
Just as you said, while you're on... Jeff Marshall, Heritage Conservancy. Not only does this meet your ordinance, it meets, because it's eligible for the National Register. I brought documentation from the Pennsylvania Spark Museum Commission for the record, or for Stephanie to have to back up the decisions. Your ordinance allows anything that's determined eligible to be added to the list, so I have seven copies of that.
Yeah, we have, we have sufficient here in our packet.
But you verify that another criteria is that it's on this delete deemed eligible, so there's two pages from the state let base that, what's that that came up?
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. So is there a motion to add this 2225 Lower State Road to the, our historically significant homes?
Before we go there, I'm sorry, I just wanted to reconfirm, I kinda didn't catch all that, about this being Mark's historic home, does this impact anything else we're doing in that area?
What, and you mean in the geographic area?
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing else?
No. There's nothing else going on in the area that...
Road widening.
Anything.
A taking of some sort, you know, right of way.
By giving it this title.
Wiping tight trails.
Well, already on the state list, we're already impeached anyway.
Okay, okay.
Throwing out any possible thing.
Dumping the railroad, something along the railroad.
Right.
Patient that could be reviewed.
Okay. As long as it does impact us later, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. I mean, there are other uses that historic properties can benefit from under our ordinance. The B-15 just happens to be one of them, but we have to recognize it and put it on our list.
It's on, is there a motion to put it on, I asked for a motion to put it on the list, and you said hold off.
I'll make that motion.
Can I just ask one question, just please, pursuant to that? Is the intent for this to be sold as a house again, you know?
No, the full disclosure is Andy, sitting here, bought the property a number of months ago. He would like to develop it. He would like to put townhomes out there and keep the historic structure as a standalone home. That's the goal.
Okay.
He needs other relief for that, though.
We need relief from this.
And that, and that house would be kind of the historic house that, house, but, but someone would actually live in that home?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
But he can't build what he wants to build today.
I understand that. I just wanted to ask if the intent was for someone to live in that?
Keeps the house, yeah.
And to develop it for, what'd you say, nine?
He would be looking for eight townhomes plus the historic structure.
Nine units on four acres.
Right.
Okay. So, but there's a motion, is there a second to put this on the historic list?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you've got your historic designation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Nationwide 457 Plan. I can't speak to this, I have no idea.
I had to read it 15 times, and Mr. Garten, thank you for your comment. I think the bottom line is, we only have one employee at this point in time, and...
Has that person weighed in on this?
They are speaking to our other, in one of our other financial advisors with one of the other programs. They have not received anything from Nationwide, so I'm not sure if they're in this fixed annuity program or not, so, because I don't know what their personal investments are.
What's the deadline on the...
Well, actually, the deadline was the end of December, but I think Ken spoke to them to get in, you know, say that we were reviewing it and giving us a little extra time. But at this point in time, it does need the board's action, and we would recommend to just go with utilizing the existing default method at this point in time, based on the information that we've read.
Not the guaranteed minimum interest rate.
It's so low.
It's so low, yeah.
So just go to the...
Yeah.
All right.
At this point.